We'll call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council Meeting to order for Tuesday, May 1st, 2018, at 7:00. We'll start first with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, before we begin, may I add, make a motion to add an item to the agenda under 14 and make it 14A, with the executive session, to discuss current collective bargaining and negotiations.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose. Counselor Big Leone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Now we'll start with our meeting roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Candelora.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Rose. Counselor Big Leone.
Here.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Here.
Okay, moving to minutes of previous meeting. Motion to approve the April 10th, 2018 budget workshop.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Rose. Counselor Big Leone.
Here.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Here.
Okay, moving to minutes of previous meeting. Motion to approve the April 10th, 2018 budget workshop.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
All right, the April 17th, 2018 Town Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, corrections. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Abstaining.
The April 23rd, 2018 special meeting, Town Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Abstaining.
The April 23rd, 2018 special meeting, Town Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
We're moving to the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, correspondence, citizens' statements. Seeing none, we'll move into unfinished business, there's nothing listed. Move into new business, Lake Gaylord Water Treatment Plant, sanitary.
Good evening. What you have before you tonight is a request from the Regional Water Authority to, for a renewal and a revision to their sanitary sewer agreement that allows a discharge of effluent from the Lake Alard Water Filtration Plant to discharge into the North Bramford Sanitary Sewers. The original agreement was put in place between the RWA and the WPCA approximately 20 years ago, when the filtration plant was having problems treating their effluent, alum sludge, they installed lagoons at the rear of the filtration plant with the intent of all their recovered water they would bring into the water filtration plant and reutilize. It presented a operational problem for them, they came to the WPCA, again about 20 years ago, requesting to be allowed to discharge in the sanitary sewers, and basically the WPCA at that time allowed to discharge to sanitary sewers in accordance with an agreement that was put in place in 2001, with parameters in terms of amount of discharge, which is about 55,000 gallons per day on an annual basis, into sanitary sewers, and they were required to pay an annual fee to the town, basically preserve, allowing that discharge to occur for specified, again, five-year periods. The reason why it was done that way is because when the sewer system was laid out, and all this discharges to the East Haven system, it was sized, the line size and capacity was negotiated with East Haven and ultimately New Haven for about 250,000 gallons per day of capacity, and the WPCA did not want to give that capacity away up to the Regional Water Authority, because it was reserved really for potential future expansion, and we have down in the Fox and area of Route 80, the sewers may occur over there, and other parts of that area, so the idea was to preserve that capacity and allow the RWA to use the discharge of water on interim bases, and they would have to come back every five years to the WPCA to do that. It's been 20 years now, and they paid about $120,000, which has helped the town, it's going into our capital fund, which helps fund capital projects. What they're asking to do now is basically to continue that agreement, they're okay with that, and then, but they've asked for some additional capacity from 55,000 gallons per day up to potentially 72,000 gallons per day capacity. The fact is, we still have the capacity there, we're about, of the 250,000 gallons per day capacity we have in the East Haven system, we're using about a third or a little over of it at this point, so the capacity exists for the increased flows. It would require them to pay $10,000 a year if we continue the arrangement we had put together 20 years ago for the increased flow. And again, the nice thing about that, that's, that does go help fund, you know, the capital items in the, in the WPCA budget and operations.
What are they paying now?
They're paying about $6,100 per year.
How is that rate, that seems very cheap for the amount.
It's not for, then they actually pay a sewer use fee for the actual, whatever we actually meter and, and we bill them on, and that's about 40, last year was about $48,000 a year for actual usage, but this is just really, they pretty much bought into, they're paying for some of the improvements we had to made down, we made when we bought into the East Haven, New Haven system a long time ago.
Kurt, did you say that these rates are from 20 years ago?
And again, it's not so much a rate, it's, it was an agreement, and there was a, that they're buying into the system, and they're paying for that temporary right to connect, the, or to discharge that flow. Originally, it was looked at, when the sewer study was done, it was anticipated that industrial use on that site would discharge about 27,000, 28,000 gallons per day, they're actually about twice of that, so they agreed to pay the town additional amounts on an annual, annual basis to allow them to expand that number to a larger.
You allowed them to.
Yeah, the WPCA.
To discharge more.
To discharge more.
And they paid for it.
And, and, and they've been paying, and they agree they pay on an interim, they pay annually for that right. The WPCA would still have.
This is 20-year-old fees.
20-year-old fees, right, but based upon something that was done in, in the 80s, is actually what it was based upon, and it's not a user fee, it's just something that they're paying towards capital, and the WPCA at that time figured, all right, this is some money that will, that will be able to utilize for capital improvements. Again, they're paying on, their actual use is somewhat a little bit less, but they anticipate they might be wanting to discharge more in the future, they would pay the user fee based upon what they actually charge on an annual basis. This again, is just a supplemental capital fee we've been getting from them that helps fund our, goes into our sewer capital fund.
So the original's based on, what, what, how much, what's the volume?
It was anticipated about 28,000 roughly.
For $6,100?
Pardon?
For $6,100 annually?
The, the original number, they, they actually paid a sewer assessment back in the mid 80s when they built the plant, but this, this was a way that the WPCA and the RWA agreed, was sort of a way of them providing a little monetary relief to the town for that buying into, you know, getting into that system with a higher flow. It's the only agreement we have like this, but it was put into place based upon, and the formula was based upon what the town had to pay towards East Haven and the Greater Haven WPCA to buy in.
Have our costs go up?
Oh, yeah.
Well, our costs for this have not gone up, no.
No, 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 no.
We've already paid that off. This is really becoming sort of.
No, our, our.
Our maintenance costs.
Our capital.
Our maintenance costs have gone up, and again, we're getting that in the annual user, you know, again, they, last year they paid $48,000 for the sewer usage, just like a homeowner paid $425 a year, they paid $47,000, because we metered what they discharged in the sanitary sewer system.
I, I could hear Al screaming in my ear from, from where he is, that, this is just way, way too cheap.
Well, I guess my, my question is, if, if they discharge 28,000 versus 50,000, is there a difference in charge?
For this, this, this money which will go to the capital fund, they would pay irregardless of what they put in.
So it's a flat fee.
That would be a flat fee, an annual fee, and that's what it has been for the past 20 years. If they discharge 10,000 gallons, in reality, they'll be charged, they'll pay a user fee based upon that, if they do 100, or 70,000, they'll be charged based upon what they actually discharged to the sanitary sewer system, and that's metered. Again, what, I mean, the way this has been used is, this is sort of a, this rolls over to the capital funds, we have, if we have to make a capital improvement, we have to buy new pumps, we don't have to hit the operational budget, and, and the difference is, again, sort of historically, they paid $40,000 as an assessment.
That still seems cheap, too, for that.
Well, that's, that was the rate, in, in the 80s, it was basically $1,600 a unit at that time, that's what they, that's what they paid, and they paid their assessment. We were able to, I mean, to get sort of a supplemental payment from them, and, and the difference is, this is not over a 20-year period, this, this in reality could be in perpetuity, there really is no end unless they stop discharge.
Well, these figures compared to what we were looking at for the Dollar General are really, really off.
Well, the difference is, I mean, this is, and again, this is the unusual agreement, this is the only one we have like that. The current thing, if you come in for a special connection fee, you have to pay it upfront, and the, you're paying at a rate of about, it's $4,000 per unit for the first five units and $2,000 per unit thereafter. That's how it's computed, so if they had 20 units, and the special connection fee on 20 units would be, it's about $50,000 on, on that basis, but again, you don't have to take action tonight, you can mull it over, I mean, I'm not pushing to that, but the rationale was, when it went through, was this is a way to get a little extra money for the capital fund. Again, they have paid an assessment, but this would, this, this would go on forever, this is not a one-time thing, this is an annual fee, so over 20 years, if there's another 20 years, there's $200,000. Goes on after that, and it's, but we could look, if you want us to look at the number or you want to mull it over, I'm, I'm not pushing that it has to be done right now, I'm just sort of bringing it forward from what had been done to what is being requested.
Kurt, I've read number two in your suggested motion a couple of times, I'm not sure I really understand it. Is the $10,074 the full annual fee they will pay for the full $72,000 they will be having the right?
No, that, that, well, 10,000, $10,000 per year would, would be paying us, that would go to the capital fund, and that would just allow them, give them the ability to discharge.
How much?
72,000 gallons per day.
72,000 gallons per day, which is in addition.
Which they meter, and they get.
And then they would pay a user fee on that 72,000.
Let me restate the question.
Okay.
I'm trying to put you under the fence, I'm trying to understand.
Absolutely.
Is it $10,000, $10,74 total, or is it $10,74 plus the fee they were previously paying?
10,000, what they would pay annually is $10,000, plus they would pay the user fee, which has been around 47, 48,000.
Original figure, Joe, the original figure was $6,800. For how much?
28.
For 28,000 gallons?
No, the original was 6,141, which was granted them.
Which is the one-time fee.
Which is 55,000 gallons per day.
Okay. When this started, 28,000 gallons per day, how much was the annual fee?
6,141, right.
Okay. When they originally, I'm gonna go back a little further, when they originally were assessed, you know, they were assessed around $40,000.
Kurt, I don't care about the assessment.
Okay.
I don't care about the user fee, this is a special fee you're telling us. What I'm asking you is, what was the initial special fee to authorize them to deposit 28,000, 28,000 gallons per day?
So 28,000 additional, it's $6,141, which gave them the 28,000 additional.
Stick, stick with me.
Yep, okay.
Then they went to 55,000 gallons, did they increase that annual fee?
No. No, no, let's back that up. When they went to 55,000, that's when they came to us and they had to pay the 6,141. Prior to that, they paid an assessment and they, that was it.
Okay, so there was no special fee for the 28,000 gallons.
That's correct.
So their previous arrangement was 55,000 gallons for $6,100 per year.
Yep.
Special fee. Now they're gonna go up a little less than $4,000, and they're going to have the right to deposit 72, almost 30,000 more gallons per, per day. How do you arrive at these numbers?
It was a factor between, the original number was around, it was a difference between the original $28,000 that they had, we figured they had for capacity, up to 55,000, 55,000 gallons, which was about another 27,000, 28,000 gallons.
Correct.
And.
Just short of that, but yeah.
Yeah. And it was based upon what we had to pay Greater Haven WPCA and East Haven, which is a little over 1.1 million dollars, and that capacity, it was, that was about 10% of that capacity, which came down to about $120,000, and it, and it was spread over 20 years.
Okay.
And that came out to about $6,000, $6,000 a year.
And is it the same computation?
Same computation.
To this $10,000 figure?
Yes. Yeah, it just, yes, it just factored in.
Okay.
But that was the concept, and again, that's what was put forth, it started 20 years ago.
Kurt, I have a question, from the 55,000 gallons that they're doing now up to 72, the user fee goes up?
They screwed this right in center.
Right.
Change now.
Am I correct?
Pardon me?
The user fee goes up?
Well, the user, the user fee goes up, and, and the user fee is separate, I mean.
Depending on how much?
It's set annually and, and based upon what they actually use, they get charged for what they use based upon the underlying rate.
We could say noted this.
Kurt, does this change the interceptor fee that's in place with East Haven? I think this is on, I'm not sure what page I'm on, it's on number two, page two, at the top, there it says, Town of East Haven, North Bramford has paid to the Town of East Haven a total of 1.1 million for capital costs for North Bramford share of the cost of East Haven's interceptor and the Shore Treatment Plant. Will that, will this change that agreement?
No, won't change that, that, that was the basis when the WPCA looked at it 20 years ago, is trying to come up with a number, you know, a methodology that, come up with, what was the value of the additional allowance, or the ability to discharge additional flows to the sewer? Not the usage, but the idea that they're buying into the system somehow, to somehow get them to pay somewhat more for the, the ability to connect into there, and the rationale was, for the WPCA at that point, okay, we're, we're doing it five-year increments, because we, we could shut the plug tomorrow, that was the thought, if, if there was a need or a demand from elsewhere in the system, we weren't giving it to the, to the RWA forever, we were giving it to them with conditions.
Because then, like, below that, it says, whereas the RWA and the Town of North Bramford agree that 10.68% of the total capacity has a value of at least $122,820.
Like 120, yeah, about the 6,000, yes, about $120,000, and the idea was, when the agreement was put together, they came up with, it was spread over 20-year period, not knowing how long it would go on for, and it has, I, I think at the time that they, they looked at it, they were trying out, they were changing the treatment process, they didn't know if it was, they were gonna try it for five, you know, see how it went, and it's, it's worked for them, so it's just been continued over the years. If it didn't work, and it caused problems in our system, or the Greater Haven WPCA's system, then they'd have to take it out and change their process.
So, do we know if we have the capacity, if they're running at 72,000?
We have the capacity, we're running about a third of our ultimate capacity in the system.
So what we don't know is if East Haven in this five-year period could come to us and say, you need to pay X hundred, thousand of dollars for capital improvements.
Okay, yep, that's true, and, and the way that works now for capital, I mean, East Haven, if they do a, an upgrade at their treatment plant, and they bought, and we're gonna have to pay our share of it, they would put, they would build that in the user fee, any future addition, that would be the user fee, so that, again, and we would charge, it would be built in, so the $48,000 a year that they paid last year, if New Haven's costs went up, that could be 50-something thousand, it would be passed on through the user fee, they wouldn't give us a separate bill for capital. That's the agreement that's in place with the Greater Haven WPCA, it's built in the annual fee. So they would be paying it, but they would be paying it in a different manner. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give you the concept, and then you can do whatever you want, was it was to try to get some supplemental capital funds from the RWA at that point for that additional capacity allowance.
I guess part of it is not having anything to compare it against to whether or not it's fair, I guess.
We got the 1979 Impact Environmental Statement.
$1984.
No, but really, that's, that's how I'm looking at it, I don't, I.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not pushing for any action, I'm, you know, it's out there, it's the request, and just trying to explain the, the basis of how it was arrived at. You could look at it with the town attorney and get some thoughts on that.
I think everybody should digest it, yeah.
And that's fine, I mean, there's, there's not a rush, they're just trying to get it out there.
Come back with their feelings next month.
And maybe Town Manager and I can talk to the town attorney, any thoughts in terms of where we could go with it as well.
Seems awful, it seems awful, awful cheap, you know, considering that, our land value up there.
Well, yeah, and, and part of the thought process was, was there, I, I think was, was there a way to get a little bit extra from, I mean, at the time, the thought was not to try to be too kind, it was to try to make sure we had some other additional payments for the capital fund.
Right.
So if it, if this goes into effect July 1st of 2019, but it says it's payable each year in advance on or before July 1st, so would their first payment of the new would be July 1st of 2018?
Be before July 1st.
Of 2019?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, there's time.
So we have time.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll just put on the next WPCA agenda, but everybody can digest it.
Yep.
Thank you, Kurt.
Next item, citizens' statements and petitions. Seeing none, we'll move into the regular Town Council Meeting, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Economic Development Commission.
They did not meet in their meeting Monday.
Thank you. Park and Recreation Commission.
They met last week, but I was unable to attend the meeting.
I'll just add, though, that Park and Rec held this year's Pizza Wars and did, and just an outstanding job, they had the largest number of attendees that they've had, so many so that they had to seat people out of the gymnasium, it's way, way over 200 people, probably a little over 250, terrific event, and Park and Rec staff did a tremendous job with it.
Thank you. Next is Police Commission.
The next Police Commission meeting is May 15th.
Fire Commission is Thursday.
Thursday.
Board of Education, Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
There is no meeting.
Town Planning and Goals Subcommittee.
Next meeting is May 15th at 6:15.
Public Safety Communications Committee.
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, I think they meet this week.
East Shore District Health Department. Next is Town Manager Report, introduction Roger Solway, EDC Coordinator.
Yes, I keep it light and focused on opportunity to introduce Roger, if you want to come forward, is our Economic Development Coordinator, Roger has a, a long, an experienced background in both the corporate and nonprofit world, and is retired, living in Essex, and is going to do 19 hours for us, and I think he'll be able to hit the ground running, he already has, and I don't think the, the John Deere background hurts at all, being in North Bramford, so I'd like to welcome Roger.
Welcome aboard.
He has an engineering and technology background, so I, I think it all fits very well for. So I'd like to welcome Roger. He has an engineering and technology background, so I, I think it all fits very well for us.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
As Michael said, my background is mainly corporate. At some point in my corporate career with John Deere, I was Marketing Director for Europe and Africa and part of Asia. It was a sort of four-hundred-million-dollar operation that I was running. I moved back to the headquarters of John Deere and ran the new business ventures for John Deere, which included building technology ventures in China and Russia, factories in India, and all kinds of things like that. I left John Deere and became the CEO of one of John Deere's major suppliers, and it was a private company, and we, I ran, helped run that for eight years. We sold the company. I retired. My wife said, no way, this is not good. So I got involved in nonprofit work, and I became the Executive Director of an organization called Compatible Technologies International in St. Paul, Minnesota. And I took that from a small, little nonprofit, a quarter of a million, to two and a half million. And at that point, both of our kids moved to New York, didn't want to come back to visit us in St. Paul. I can't understand how that happened, and grandkids came along, so we said, why don't we move east? And so we took it to some time, and we traveled a lot around the world. And so we retired, I retired again from this nonprofit, and we moved to Essex. Been in Essex now about fifteen, sixteen months. I'm on the Board of Parties for Kids, Connecticut. I'm involved in the Essex Land Trust and doing a bunch of volunteer work, and I saw the ad had been placed in our local newspaper, and my wife said, why not? You know, a little bit about farming. In, you know, North, North Branford has got a very strong agricultural base. Why don't you see if they want to talk to you? I said, okay. And here I am. So that's my background. I've been here in two days, this is my second day. Enjoyed meeting a lot of the management team, and my focus is primarily at the beginning to, to understand the existing economic base, and all the things from agritourism, the sports recreational facilities, many other good things that I see. And Michael was good enough to take me for a two-hour tour of the, of the whole of the area, including North, Northwood. I see focusing on retention and expansion of the existing economic bases as first priority, followed by attracting new investors into the community. As you probably all know, Connecticut is a number four in the country in terms of R and D investment. So would try to capitalize on the potential for private investment in technology. My background is technology, as you heard, so I'm hoping to be able to leverage my sort of corporate background, nonprofit background. I know nothing much about municipal background, but, you know, I've solved a lot of these problems in my past, so I'm looking forward to working with council and with Michael's team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Next, community events and presentations.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to mention another community event that took place on Friday evening at Smith Library, the Military Wist. I think it was an outstanding success. I think the library did a terrific job. People from other towns mentioned how wonderful it was. The only bad thing was that George won.
I got a wine.
And also, isn't tonight the awards banquet?
Yes.
For police.
It's the Shoreline Heroes, and Tan Ash and, oh, Cortsbury are being honored at Woodwinds tonight.
If I could just piggyback on Marie's remarks, the Military Wist was very successful. They, they attracted eleven tables worth of participants, forty-four people, and the library's staff stepped up remarkably. And I think, I certainly hope that Lauren does more events. She certainly pulled this one off perfectly, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I think also, just gonna announce that you have this in your packet for tomorrow night, the art show at Smith Library. I think you'll have that.
Yeah, the whole of the Smith Library is currently decorated with the North Branford Public School art. And if anybody out there hasn't stopped over, you really must.
It'll be up for almost the whole month of May.
Yeah.
So that, if you can't make it to.
Kindergarten up through high school, the quality of the artwork and the obvious quality of the instruction that led to it is, is just outstanding. And for someone who has no art background whatsoever, I'm impressed.
And next is citizens' statements, petitions, correspondence, correspondence from Bill Chody, Totoka TV.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and to see if there were any reservations about doing that. I'd be happy to talk with Bill Chody in Totoka TV about going live. I, I mean, I would like to get your blessing first and, and/or any questions or concerns you may have before we, we authorize going and doing that.
One question that somebody brought up to me was the portal. How do we control access?
Yeah, that, that I don't know yet.
I did have a discussion today. There's basically two networks here. There's the public network and the town secure network, and the thought would be to let them use the town, the public unsecured network for their purpose, so they wouldn't infiltrate the town network per se. We give them an IP address in that range that we've allocated to that network, and it would be exclusive. We, no touching the town network at all.
Okay, so now planning and zoning, or the council goes into executive session. How is that controlled?
That's a good question. I don't know. I know the security cameras we have control for, but I'm not sure about their cameras. No different than you have now, same issue could, could exist now. She could be filming when you're in executive session currently. You have to rely on, on the honesty of the, the staff, the cable TV folks.
Well, that's, that's wide open now, you know.
But we can go in there and unplug it.
Right. I mean, like I said, the, the same thing could exist today. So the live versus the taping, that really doesn't have an impact on that. In either case, you're relying on them to, to hear your advice.
Maybe we or Bill should do a little North Haven or Branford, the people he's quoted as using it.
Sure.
See what they do with their executive sessions, because I'm sure they have to have the same executive sessions, you know, that we have. And how do they work with board education meetings for their executive session? I know they're in a different room.
Right.
They walk out and they leave, you know.
It would only be for people that use this particular room, they would be able to film live, because it'd be wired through their system here out to the internet. And we could ask Walter Mann, or the woman that's filming this meeting tonight, actually films the North Haven meetings. I'm sure she has the answer of what they do in North Haven. We could ask her and get an answer for you.
Yeah, if they could do that, and then, you know, come back next meeting and just give us an idea how they address that. Next item is resignations and appointments. There's nothing listed. Next item is unfinished business discussion in action. Approval of proposed ordinance, chapter forty, fire department fees. It's table till July. Next is future budget plan and initiative, potential solar array, North Branford landfill.
Yeah, I put this on the agenda just because we had, having a lot of different conversations, and Kurt and I took a meeting with one of these companies, Green Skies, and, and in summary, basically, we're trying to go for looking at the landfill former, capped landfill, and looking at possible array on that, and was hoping to have some good news to report. But unfortunately, they went out, did their walk and assessment, and it's just because of the slopes and the wet areas on the, on the area, they can't get enough for a project they were considering us for. But still recommended that we might take a look at going out to potentially issuing an RFP for a solar company to help us design whether or not, or where the potential lies beyond just roofs of buildings. We thought the landfill would be an adaptive reuse that would, would function just like it would leasing space for a cellphone tower, and we could have realized some revenue off of that. So it seemed like low-hanging fruit that we wanted to go after, but when they went out and did their assessment, they weren't gonna get the two-to-three megawatt project that they thought they could. It's much smaller and only about, you know, half a megawatt or something like that. So I just, I put it on in terms of timing, hoping that we could explore the opportunities for that. We still can, in a much smaller scale, but that would be, if, if you don't really have a company doing behind-the-meter, so to speak, selling it to, you know, to, to UI, then for our sake, we have nothing to power out there. So that's why it made sense that they were interested in using it, because it was going to be part of a bigger project in which they were gonna sell to UI and then give us a rent, so to, so rent the land, put the turnkey, and we wouldn't have to do anything in terms of security or anything like that, and, or investment. It would just allow them to use it, set it up, put the array in, and we would collect the check, kind of thing. So unfortunately, it's just not big enough, but I think it's still worth potentially putting together somewhere down the road an RFP to engage a solar company, look at townwide, looking at all our buildings and maybe roof-mounted arrays, and maybe some small ground mounts where we can. So.
Yeah, that just, just triggered. I got a letter from the sitting council, and it said, I have a petition for a declaratory ruling pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes four dash one seventy-six and sixteen dash fifty K for proposed construction, maintenance, and operation of a four-point-nine-eight-megawatt AC solar photogenic electric generating facility located at two thirty-two Remmon Road in seven hundred Riddletown Avenue in North Haven. So it's within two hundred and fifty feet of North Branford, so they, they sent us a letter just notifying us.
Yeah, and I think that's where the.
That might be the same company?
Yeah, exactly. It triggered the whole, they came to meet with us and took with Kurt and Carrie about the impact or protect, you know, just as part of their regulatory process, and began to talk with us about.
So that'd be almost twice the size than the one they proposed for.
Oh, yeah. They've got some large, I believe they're using excess land from a cemetery in that, in that location, I think. Is that, yeah. So, yeah, quite a bit of excess land there. It's a big operation, yeah.
All right, thank you. Next is review of ethics ordinance.
So I've been reading through everything that the town attorney had sent to us in regards to this item, and I also spoke to the town attorney and took into consideration the brief discussion that we had at a council meeting when this was first put onto the agenda. And after going through everything, I have come to the conclusion that the council cannot control what people say, what they do, or their actions. And I'm not so sure that there's anything that we can do in the ethics ordinance that would, that would solve that problem. And I also took into consideration, with Counselor Miller had said at one of the meetings in regards to people's actions, and like, do we really want to get involved in that? And so I am withdrawing my work into this area, and I feel we can just leave it as is right now. When I did talk to the town attorney, he said, one possible way, if we wanted to continue with it, that we could give it to the Ethics Commission to see once if there was anything that they thought could be done with it. So that would be up to the council. As far as I'm concerned, because I was the one that put this on the item, I am withdrawing it.
Okay. Next is review of board of education, rules of procedures and policy.
I, I think we should just wait until Al is back, because this is an item that he had wanted to stay on here and talk to the town attorney about, so.
It'll just stay on. Next, we'll move into new business discussion in action. Update of draft language for construction work requirement and road standard ordinance.
Yeah, on this particular issue, we have the language, which is very simplistic, very straightforward with the police commission's request to add coverage, the work that happens in the right-of-way above ground in the sort of, in the wires, if you will. But it's in the same chapter as Kurt had brought up in terms of road standards, so that's rather lengthy in terms of proposed changes. And I've only recently had a chance to get that to, to the town attorney for review. So it's gonna need more time, and I think the issue is whether or not the council feels you want to separate the two issues, and, and I don't think you want to do that in terms of having multiple public hearings. We just wait. Because I don't see any urgency in terms of, of either, either ordinance, and that we just give the town attorney time to review with myself and Kurt the standard language, and also for the council to, to have a chance to take a look at that and, and bring that back in, in the, in the June meeting, or maybe in the May meeting if possible.
What is the ordinance then? What is the proposal?
Well, the, the language was, I believe in the last, Kurt had submitted the road construction draft that he had, which is, I think, in, in new language, I think, is, he strikes out and adds, it should be, it was in your packet.
Is it, is it the bold, is the new language?
It's, it's the draft, right? It says draft and then.
Right.
So is the bold the new part, like, item B on? Is that? Or was that in there?
I think it's the italics.
I think, yeah, I, I believe the italics is the, is the new language.
Yeah, if you look throughout, you'll see italics. So the italics, I believe, is the new proposed, and anything that's being stricken is, has a line through it.
So I thought, you know, just, I know it's long, so if the council members certainly have any comment, certainly submit, submit to me, send to me, anything you want to incorporate or understand.
So there's a, well, there's a lot in the middle there that's all being taken out, or proposed to be taken out, because you're.
I need to clarify, what I was trying to do was, on the road ordinance, the standards, requirements, basically, take it out and then have a road standards document that would be referenced in the ordinance, not have it in the ordinance. So if we ever wanted to make a minor change to a road standard, we wouldn't have to go through an ordinance change. So, so that's, that's what I had pretty much in there. That was the biggest thing I was trying to do, accomplish in, in the road standards part of it.
It's not that the sections were taken out, it's that they were rewritten.
Right.
And it's very difficult to do that on the tablet and compare section by section. So it's gonna have to be printed out so that we can make some sense out of this. We have to go through and look at that.
But the section that was developed by the police commission, that's been, already been reviewed, is that my understanding? It's just that trying to put the two together?
Right.
Yes.
That part's been reviewed?
Yes, the, the draft that was put together by the police commission, I had made my comments, given my comments to the town manager, I think, two or four weeks ago, and there was just one minor edit. So now the, the real question is whether or not we want to simply incorporate this proposal from the police commission into the safety requirements of the present ordinance.
Kind of makes sense, but I'm just curious if that part has been reviewed.
Right. But yes, that has been.
Just one thing jumps out at me on item C or in D, where it says at sites where meetings, municipal agencies, whether agents or contractors are performing work, regardless of their location, the ordinance allows the police chief or is designated to approve properly-equipped, trained municipal employees or agent flaggers instead of police officers. So let's just say Public Works hires, I don't know, contractors to do trees. What happens if there's one contractor and they have to hire a police officer? What happens if there's one contractor and they have to hire a police officer, another one does a flagger, or how do they, how do you distinguish or who would be the flagger for like the private contractor that we hire to do trees?
Well, they would probably have to hire their own flagger, or it could be us.
Right.
Right, we weren't going to penalize ourselves when we were doing work and allowing Public Works flaggers to.
Yeah, I understand. I think, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I mustn't just do the job by, by the draft, but they would have to hire either a police officer or maybe a flagger or something. It's going to cost us.
I don't know if it addresses that exactly.
For municipal projects?
Yeah, because we do a lot, we do hire outside.
Right, so that section C that was proposed by the police commission would provide that the ordinance allows the police chief or his designee to approve properly equipped and trained municipal employees or age, agent flaggers instead of police officers. So depending upon whether or not we had the capacity in-house.
Well, I could just see that creating a problem, you know, like Fran just said, if he's going to have to have his guys go be flaggers, you're probably going to do the job. So I don't know if that will work, that exact word verbiage. I don't know.
We're going to get it printed out anyway.
Yeah.
We're not doing anything with it tonight.
Yeah, we'll bring that one back.
Next is review of position and police organizational structure tabled since four seventeen eighteen. I left a memo at your, your desk. This item was put on the agenda to bring attention to changes that were made in the organizational chart of town in North Branford in nineteen nineties. It places the board of fire commissioners, police commissioners along with their respective chiefs above the town manager. Having more than one person in charge can and has led to many managerial problems. I believe that the current organizational chart has to be reviewed and possibly changed back to where all departments are in the control of and/or answer to the town manager. Having more than one person in charge is confusing and leads to unnecessary management problems. An example of this was possible labor law violation that was brought to my attention now needs to be addressed. First step would be returning all administrative functions to the town manager. I brought out the council members along with the town manager and town attorney narrative, highlighting my concerns. And, you know, it's clear that something went wrong here. And I, I spoke to Michael on it, and Michael was not totally aware of how it, how it came, all came about, so. And I asked him to get some organizational charts from other towns that have a town council, town manager, form of government, so we could see. Maybe somebody else has the correct answer. And I, I can't remember when, you know, when in a municipal agency or state agency or federal agency where somebody bypassed the whole testing system. If you remember anything in the state, George, did anybody?
I'm sorry?
Anybody in the state? When you were, you were left in time in the state, did anybody just slip past and just, without an application process or?
Well, I've, I've not seen anything like what's suggested here, not, not, not since there's been certification requirements anyway. But the police commissioners have statutory responsibility, and I, I assume it's, the statute is mirrored in the ordinance. So that, that creates a problem with, with the review, I think, as, as you're suggesting, but, you know.
Well, many years ago, everything was run through the town manager's office. They, they were called up and told to put an ad in the paper. The ad was put in the paper, the applications went to the town manager's office, they were logged in, then they were sent up to the police department. And over the years, all that's been bypassed now, and everything goes right to the police department. So there's, there's no control anymore, and, and there's, you know, possibility of, you know, corruption taking place.
The authority, though, adheres to the police commission.
But it doesn't give them exclusive rights to, to do, you know, advertising, testing, hiring. They have to give it to somebody. And if, if you don't have somebody responsible, then this is what you get. So.
There's, there seems to be a problem with a hire, yeah.
My, my question is, you know, and my, my, my thought is that any type of hiring like that has to go through the town manager's office.
I guess I would ask the town attorney, if you have a police commission, does the police commission have total authority over the police chief? Or are there towns where there might be something like the hiring and the budgeting and the policy would go under the town manager? Or are they, you absolutely have to have it all under the police commission if you have one?
You know, I started looking at the whole police, the police commission statutory framework, A, in anticipation of tonight's dialogue, but also in order to further educate myself so that when we have a conversation, I can be a little bit more timely in my response. And it's, what's interesting about the whole framework is that the legislature provided that whether or not to create a police commission is a discretionary act, it's not a mandatory act. However, it does not say, for example, other statutory frameworks dealing with other organizational committees would vest it in the legislative body unless the, the formation of another commission. This framework, this framework does not say who that, i- if you did not create a police commission, that it would be vested in the legislative body. So that's something I, I want to look a little deeper into the legislative history of the statutory framework. But it's not of really any moment because this town has created a police commission, so we have to abide by the statutory framework. And the powers of, of the police commissioners, which are embodied within seven dash two seventy-six of the general statutes, provides that the police commissioners shall have general management and supervision of the police department of such town and of the property and equipment used in connection therewith, shall make all needful regulations for the government thereof not contrary to the law, and may prescribe suitable penalties for the violation of any such regulation, including suspension or removal from office of any officer or member of such department. Such board shall have the sole power of appointment, promotion, and removal of the officers and members of such police department. Under such regulations as is adopted for the purpose and such appointee shall hold office during good behavior and until removed for cause without, upon written charges and after hearing. So generally speaking, in my experience, it is the police commission that is the body that has that authority that we're now discussing. I would say, though, that in this community, because what this town, what this body has reserved to itself through the charter is oversight over all boards and commissions to the extent that there is believed malfeasance. So if you feel there's something going wrong within your police commission, you do retain through your charter the ability of investigation to do that. But with respect to the actual hirings and or firings within that department, I, I am of the opinion that the statutory framework rests that within the commission. And I think that if there's an issue, and I think the mayor raises a legitimate concern, that you can exercise your authority under your charter to investigate this and potentially make recommendations to your commission, but the police commission can also implement, and I, I've attended the last couple of meetings of the police commission, and I know that the commissioners are trying to bring some sense of order and within the department or within the operations of their commission, they can create some rules and regulations for the department so that issues like this are addressed appropriately going forward. But I, I, I do share some of your concerns that you raised, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, because as far as I'm concerned, our town manager is a personnel director, so he should be in charge, well, not in charge of hiring and firing, but he should be in charge of the applications that come in. We have nothing to say that every application comes in gets processed. We have no checks and balances. And when you don't have one person in charge and one person that answers, has that responsibility, things like this happen.
And I, I would think that what, what the police commission can do through their own regulatory process is they could designate the town manager for that purpose, but then, but the ultimate decision of the hiring would still remain with the police commission. So they have the ability to bring the town manager in. You do not have, I believe, the independent statutory authority to direct them that it has to be the town manager. I think that has to come from within the commission.
Is, is there any indication that the hiring standards set by the state were not met in any of these hirings?
I, I didn't look into that, that, that much. I didn't even contact the commission yet. I want to refer my letter to the police commission, you know, and see what the story is and see if they come up with an answer. Maybe, you know, this was just what I surmised or what I read from reading the minutes, you know, I mean, you had four conditional offers going out, and then all of a sudden, one guy comes in at a meeting that where they selected another candidate, they're both sworn in together. And there's no record of, of that officer's application ever coming into the town manager's office or coming into the police department.
Well, there's also the possibility to consider of asking the state police officer standards and training through their certification function to ask for them to investigate whether the hiring standards were met on any, any of the hires. If, if that's, if that's an issue, certainly that can be done.
I think somebody has to look into it. So whether the attorney looking at the other case should look into it?
Mayor D, may I ask a question? I'm not sure about any background information that needs to be placed into the minutes to make reference to any of this. Is there, is there background information? Or is this from an executive session issue? I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be entering in. I have no information at all on this, and I just want to make sure it's captured properly.
I just did that for council meetings.
The, the item.
I could, I could give, I could give you, you know, my, my brief statement.
Uh, do you?
Okay.
Wait, wait a minute. Do you really want to capture that in the minutes?
What was that?
I just, I just want to make sure that it's captured and processed properly for the public.
Because, George, four of those guys could have a, a labor law.
Hey, I, I understand. I'm asking if you want, if you want the contents of that.
No, I just gave her my brief opening statement, you know.
This.
I don't know.
Can't this be referred to the town attorney for investigation?
He's got a copy of it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I have it, and I will loop in David Zabel, my partner David Zabel, who's handling a lot of the police commission issues.
So this is, what, which, what item is this under? The review of position of police chief organizational sections?
Under B, yes.
Okay. Okay, so you have a brief statement under that?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, that's all I have.
So isn't David's word anywhere?
Yes. Let's refer to the town attorney. Uh, next item is police commission bylaws table from four seventeen eighteen.
I presented those bylaws that were developed by the police commission to the town council last meeting, last town council meeting, and I guess I asked if the town attorney would review those bylaws. I think the town, the police commission has worked hard on those, and I think what they're just looking for is, you know, proper procedures in order. I guess the question is, where do they, where do they stand at this point?
Other than, I, I, I did review them. I do have a couple of typograph, typographical catches that I have noted on my copy. The, I did want to, I was hoping to address a couple of things with the police commission, which I have on my calendar to attend their next meeting. So if this can be maybe tabled until after, I can address a couple of things with the police commission, just about governance and make sure that it's exactly what they're thinking, and then I, I think you'll be ready to act.
So this item should just be moved up to unfinished business then, and we'll just, instead of new business, we'll just put it under unfinished and just carry it since police commission meets next week, and then we have a meeting the following week.
So, yeah, just move it up to unfinished business.
Yep. Our next item is review of standard Stuart Imande recommendations.
Yeah, I was looking at, at audit, you know, when we received it that night, we had a long agenda, and if you read some of this backup in here, we also have our personnel rules, regulation manual has not been updated since nineteen eighty-six, and they're giving some recommendations, and perhaps we should like, I think, review, and I'm not sure what the recommendations are. We could probably work with the town manager.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, I mean, we are working on it, so I know it came up a couple of meetings ago. We were going to just defer until we got through the budget season, so I, I know that I've handed off to the town attorney's office and they're reviewing it. So there is, what I found was a, was a document actually started by Carl Kilduff, so I'm just going to build off, you know, build off of that, and we should have something in a future meeting, possibly for, for June, to take a look at updating that. It's, it's, so it's, yes, so it's a work in progress right now. And then, and I read it as, you need to update it. And I don't think they pass any specific detail on other than to note that the town really should update it.
And just what they made mention of internal controls, are those, you know, like different steps for processes or something, or?
Right, yeah, in, in internal controls with respect to who, who has oversight, who's signing off and, and so forth. So those, they typically, I think, any auditing firm is going to look at those internal controls. And in fact, we did several months ago, if not, less than a year ago, I think we went through, take a look at that as well.
Our next item is annual appointment of auditor.
This is just a process required by OPM that the governing body appoints the auditor. And we awarded the contract in RFP number one for eighteen nineteen to Mashad, Acavella, Woodbridge, and Kazano. This is just. This is just the OPM formality of officially appointing them to do the seventeen eighteen audit for a fee of thirty-three five, that was in their proposal.
We have a suggested motion?
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council appoints the firm of Mashad, Acavelo, Woodbridge, and Casano LLC as the independent auditor designated to conduct the annual audit of the town of North Branford for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Their fee to perform this work, per their response to RFP number one, two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, will be thirty-three thousand five hundred. Furthermore, the treasurer, finance director is directed to notify the secretary of the Office of Policy and Management of this action.
Second. Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelaure?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leon?
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is approval and review of specifications for RFP eleven, two thousand seventeen, two thousand, the police station EOC generator.
In the current year's capital plan, there was seventy-five thousand dollars earmarked for replacing the generator at the police station slash emergency operations center. Subsequently, we were able to receive a grant through the state for another fourteen thousand dollars. The RFP that you have in front of you is ninety-nine percent finalized. One thing that came up today was the possibility of putting an ad alternate from the one hundred KW to a one twenty-five KW to see what the price differential was, and then being able to have the flexibility to go back and forth between those two models. So the only caveat, the only change I would suggest would be an ad alternate to go from the one hundred KW generator to a one twenty-five KW, that was a suggestion of an electrician. If we have the additional money, it'd be worthwhile, in his opinion, to get that. So propose that, the RFP with that one amendment, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve RFP, the specifications for RFP number eleven, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, police station EOC generator, and to add an ad alternate to include the cost of a one twenty-five, did you say?
Yes, correct.
One twenty-five KW.
KW generator as the ad alternate.
Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelaure?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leon?
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano?
When's the installation on that, Anthony?
Good question. We did put in the RFP that the potential location could change pending any kind of renovation work up there, so it's hoped to be in the next forty-five days, but we did leave that window open, that if we do decide to move it, based on proposed renovations, that there might be an additional or alternative location put in place. But again, it's all, we don't want to put it down and have to move it, you know, thirty days later.
Oh, that'd be a hell of a cost.
Right, if something does happen up there, I mean, it appears something is going to happen up there, the timing has to mesh with this, and we did leave that caveat in the RFP that there, there's a site there currently, but it might not be the site that the new generator is going to sit on.
Okay, thank you. Next is delinquent property taxes.
You may recall from the tax collection policy that the town council passed, I believe it was two or three years ago, one of the steps involved in the collection of real estate taxes, before any real estate accounts go to the town attorney's office, they are run through the town council for notification purposes. In a separate document, you do have, in the town council packet, you have the list numbers of the affected properties, and in the separate document, you have the individual sheets. Ken Delfini, our tax collector is here tonight, if anybody has any particular questions on those other sheets, if you want to discuss them now, or if you want to discuss them in executive session as pending litigation, it's up to you folks, if anybody has any questions or specific concerns that you want to address. If there's no concerns, we'll just, we'll meet with the town attorney on his next visit to town hall and discuss it with him. In addition, there are some additional accounts that have sewer use, a couple of years, delinquent of sewer use, that we want to capture as well, in there as well. So they, they may be folks that are in the pile you have in front of you, but there may be some folks that have additional sewer use, not the same dollar magnitude, but two or three years of sewer use, and we want to capture those before they get too far gone. So I'd permission to discuss those with the town attorney as well. And some, nine times out of ten, a simple letter from the town attorney will solve the problem, and either they'll refinance, or find money, or get on payment plans that they adhere to. A lot of the folks you see in front of you, in front of you, had been on payment plans at one time or another, and once they violate the payment plan, they then fall into bad graces and come before you folks for the next step in the collection process. Again, that was all spelled out in the formal policy you folks adopted about three, two or three, or maybe four years ago now. If there's no particular questions of anybody specific in there, then we'll just give me the nod, and we'll, we'll meet with Ben and-
Is this all residential?
Uh, yes, sir.
No.
There was, there was a commercial one.
Is there a commercial there also?
Yeah, I believe so.
I'm sorry.
So are we given the nod to go forward with?
Collections.
Collection.
Collections, right.
We need, we need a motion to approve that, turn them over for collection, right?
So I'll make the motion, then we can discuss if there's any. Make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council directs the tax collector to provide updated information to the town attorney relating to the delinquent status of the list numbers provided. Furthermore, the North Branford Town Council directs the town attorney to commence collection proceedings on the aforementioned list numbers.
Second.
So this is but the first step for collection, like just a letter from the town attorney?
Yes.
There would be a letter, and if there was no response, then potentially foreclosure action.
Just want to be clear.
Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelaure?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leon?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item, citizen statements and petitions. All right, moving to executive session for collective bargaining agreement.
Including anyone?
Town manager and the-
And town attorney?
And the town attorney.
Town treasurer and town attorney.
And finance director.
We got to, roll call.
So Joe moved in, and Anthony seconded.